... map included in your packet. Thank you, Commissioner. The subject property is bought inside the blue area. If you follow my cursor, it is approximately seventy-eight acres directly west of Butler County College and south of Tuwanda Avenue. Within, within on that map, you see the thousand-foot buffer where notifications were sent out of the public hearing. This is a very conceptual rendering of vision of what the development could look like. Currently, the landowner is looking at, just focusing on Phase One, which is the northeast corner of the subject parcel we're considering for zoning tonight, right up in this area. He's requesting an R-three zoning, and what R-three is in the city of El Dorado is multifamily. So it can be everything from single-family, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. They have a vision of mixed use up in that northeast corner. The current zoning is AR, agricultural residential. With the property being annexed into the city limits, it needs to be assigned as zones. Agricultural residential is a zoning district meant for areas generally outside of the city limits within our E T J, you hear a lot of those cases. And that's low-density residential where one home per forty acres. So the developers here, if you have any questions or they want to make a presentation on this case, now would be a good time for that.
Good evening. I'm Jake Bosho at S E H. I'm the engineer on the project.
Can I get you to state your address and all for the record?
Yeah, sure. Three oh five Auto Drive, U T A N, Nebraska. So I am with S E H. I'm the engineer on the project. Scott did a good job of introducing the project and stating everything about it thus far. As you can kind of see, the concept that we put together is mostly single-family, but there are some multifamily units there on the very east side. So at this point, obviously, it's conceptual, and we're talking about zoning, not the prelim plat quite yet. But that's pretty close to what it will be on the final prelim plat and as we move to final plating. So stand for any questions. Take any other comments that you folks might have.
Jake, so you're only asking for the rezoning on what's on the yellow?
Correct.
On my paper and not the entire thing?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is the only property within the city limits. That is the only property we're considering for zoning. The other is just concept. I mean, it helps staff make decisions on future plating that they're going to present to us, how maybe the whole thought process may intertwine.
Okay. So Mr. Rickert, on a quick count, I saw a hundred, maybe?
Do you know the number of lots up top?
I was just counting real quick. This letter up here talks about three hundred, and I was just counting the spaces in there.
Are you talking the total development?
No, I'm talking about what you're asking for the rezone on.
Oh, yeah, that's approximately what it is.
I just took a quick count?
Three hundred total, yeah, that's approximately, yep.
Okay.
Just in the rezoned area that we're dealing with?
Yep, just in the rezone, you're correct, around a hundred, yep. But Scott's correct. You can't really just consider one area when you're planning a larger area. But we are just talking about this first phase, we'll call it, to the very east.
And you're talking about single-family homes and?
A lot of those lots are, that are in yellow. The lots in red on the very east and adjacent to the college, those are the sort of multifamily townhomes.
So that's where we were talking about mixed use, the ones that directly abut the property of B C C.
Correct.
Will there be a buffer zone between your property and the college, these structures? I mean, trees, fence, hundred feet, two hundred feet, ten feet?
You know, a buffer's not required for this transition at all. So I, we didn't intend to do one, no.
Will there be access to your property from the college?
I sure hope so. I mean, I-
This might be a student of housing?
Yeah, absolutely. Why not? I mean, I think they would be open to whoever would rent them, but obviously, that's a, that's a great tenant. And I don't want to get too into the weeds because we are just talking about rezone. A lot of that will come at the prelim plat stage when we talk about lots and the types of housing and everything.
Yeah, typically, we see our buffers when you're, when you're looking at commercial, high-traffic, high-volume next to a residential or an industrial next to office institutional type use. It's something that's very drastic. And with the college being zoned, office institutional, it's meant to be within neighborhoods. It's, it's that type of use.
And Mr. Rickert, I'm sure that B C C got a letter, and you got no response?
We did not hear anything from B C C.
Okay.
How much parental feet are you talking about? I know the acreage, but I don't know how much, how many feet are you talking about on Tuwanda?
It's, if, looking at it, approximately probably an eighth of a mile.
It does kind of look like there's quite a bit of space between one of the newer homes on Tuwanda and one of the existing properties. Is that right?
There is, one thing this project's going to have to deal with, and you can see why there's no lots laid out in this area, is you, is you've got a natural buffer there, which is a floodway.
Okay.
So there's going to be restrictions that things can't occur within the floodway. There's a larger flood plain, you know, maybe some dirt can be moved to drainage and considered utilities, but there is flood plain on the property. That's, that's why you see that kind of division-
That's why you'd see that, okay.
-between Phase One they're talking to you about versus the rest of the development.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess to piggyback off that, so that, that big drainage area, you know, we have to consider that for the hundred-year flood as it comes through there. So we have to consider drainage. So a lot of that area will be maintained, so a lot of green space in there. That's why you're not seeing a ton of density in that first seventy-eight acres. Other features of the site, you know, obviously, we're preserving green space in a lot of different areas on the south border of the property as well, and then kind of intertwined in between some lots where we would have pedestrian trails, sidewalks, things like that to maintain green space and also make the, make an amenity to, to the development and to the area.
And along that waterway that sometimes floods, you don't have any intentions of cutting those trees down next to the waterway?
No, there's, there'll be some, obviously, but there, we don't want to disturb, and we can't due to, you know, restrictions due to the Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction of floodways, and a lot of this is wetland, honestly.
So you're not going to disrupt-
So we can't disturb the wetland areas.
You're not going to disrupt the repairing or anything like that?
Correct, yep.
Gotcha.
So there's a lot of areas we're trying not to touch, basically.
Any questions by the commission?
One other thing I may bring up, you know, we talked about the floodways. You can see to the south, too, it's, there's some space there as well. And there's pipeline right-ofways that go across the property there from the south through the entire, you know, section there east-west. So they've got to stay away from those pipeline right-ofways as well.
I guess one last question in conjunction with that. Well, that affect the ability to have basements? There we were talking about those pipelines coming through.
No, not necessarily. I mean, the rock out there, you know, kind of, the market may dictate-
Yeah, I got you.
Yep, we're, we're quite a ways from final design. So there's a lot of things that we, we don't know yet and haven't laid out completely yet. But, but yeah, valid question.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this, on that part? All right, then, I guess we'll move to the public hearing. Anybody that'd like to speak? No?
I'm Greg Ebert. I live at thirty-two thirty-five West Tuwanda. And one of my concerns is with this development. I know it's going to probably go through. But the traffic on Tuwanda Avenue is not built for what? We're going to have a hundred more homes out there and probably three hundred more behind us. And we're going to put that load on Tuwanda. We got college traffic. We got refinery traffic going through there. If you have one o'clock between about seven and nine in the morning, you probably can count about three hundred cars that go through there. And I don't think that road's built for it. So I talked to one of the trustees with the Butler County Juco, and they said that they were, the junior college was going to do something over and over and rebuild. And so the cities, citizens around there just said, "Well, we don't want to pay for the upgrade." And I'm the same way. If these developers want to develop this land, have them develop and upgrade Tuwanda Avenue. And I hope you guys would consider that.
Impact of traffic is, is something, you know, in your decision-making process as planning commissioners, you consider. I, I will let everyone know a little, a little bit on that. The improvement of Tuwanda Avenue and Boyer Road is within the city's capital improvement plan at, at some point in the future. And it's really driven on when growth occurs. So there is that project set aside. We have estimated costs on it. Right now, we have just wrapped up the public engagement portion of our transportation study. J E O talked to you all about that a while ago. Tuwanda Avenue, Tenth Street, you know, as it's called in the county, has been identified as an important east-west arterial throughout El Dorado.
I'd call it a bypass. It's a bypass.
A bypass.
People don't own down Central to Havre Hill, they use that.
So it is within the city's long-range plan, and what we're looking at is transportation study. And we are aware, it's, it's a township-built-out road that carries a lot of traffic today and is just going to continue to carry more traffic if development occurs or not.
And I would like to, hope you guys have had the developers pay for the upgrade of that road. Because I lived over on the south, over on Third Street, and I paid for the Boyer bypass and I paid for Third Street. And I really don't want to pay for Tuwanda because these guys are upgrading, not me.
Yeah, and that, that'll be a decision of the city commission, how they proceed with that.
Greg, that was a concern of mine at the last meeting that we had, was the traffic, yeah.
So Scott, so who's responsible for the maintenance of the road now, today?
Um, it's, it's a mix. Township and El Dorado Township and the city of El Dorado. The city limits stagger across that road in various places today. Typically, what we have done, our public works will, will help fund share with El Dorado Township while the township makes improvement. Maybe we'll pay for materials to keep it in the shape it's in today.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak?
This is the public hearing, yeah.
So same thing, you know, look, I, I think I can speak around here, but maybe not. None of us want it, so we damn sure don't want to pay for it, right? Oh, I'm Richard Orsh. And, yeah, we don't want any burden of this at all, right? It doesn't, it's not going to enrich us one bit. So we don't want any of the, any of the cost. We don't think we should have to incur any of it. I don't think anybody here says, "Boy, we wish today, if nothing else changed, you guys would make our road bigger or less lumpy," or any of that stuff. I mean, it's perfectly okay for our current needs. The other thing is, that, that property is getting ready to be developed. I don't know, I'm not going to pretend to be an environmental engineer or what have you, but it's an abandoned oil field. So you guys are going to dig up the dirt on an oil field that's been in continuous production for more than fifty years? I mean, what's under the, what's under the soil there? And you're talking about the flood plain and everything else? I mean, all that, all that study's been done? Have we worked with the K D A G or anybody like that to kind of look at that and understand?
Well, this, this is just a rezoning.
Right.
All the studies and stuff will come.
Okay, well, it just seems like, you know, if that hasn't been considered yet, I mean, there are, I don't know, for a long time, several oil wells, both active and inactive, on the property. And those things, I mean, well, it's not clean stuff, right?
It, it's a fair question, what you're asking, I believe, but I don't know that this body has anything to do with that.
Okay, well, like I said-
But that's, that's a fair question.
Well, because we wouldn't want to be, like I said, I don't, I may not know what I'm talking about, but a bunch of cows walking around on top of some undisturbed dirt is probably okay. But digging up a bunch of dirt to put houses is probably not okay. And if there were to be any kind of remediation, I am sure that we wouldn't want to have to carry any of that burden as well. So that's about all I've got, so, anyway.
Do you want to give your name and address?
Oh, I'm thirty-five oh five West Tuwanda. I'm Richard Orsh. So, anyway.
Anybody else?
Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Commission. Richard Higgins, thirty-four thirty-five West Tuwanda Avenue. I have, I have a few concerns about this and being annexed back over. A lot of it has to do with traffic on Tuwanda. I know that once they get this done, they'll probably want to keep moving on. And Richard brought up a good point about the environmental, will there be an environmental study done on that property and test, test holes drilled for it? That's my question.
If there will be environmental studies?
Yeah.
You know, there's going to be, just like your home where you're built. It was, it's an oil field, or it had an oil field, so-
Fire? Go ahead.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of projects, developments that have been El Dorado oil producing in the backyard, and, and that's really at the risk, that's really the owner's responsibility, and the future owners of the lot, they bet that.
Because my concern is, you know, you, you disturb the land, you get winds blowing, you get dust coming up, and what, what effect it will have on everybody that's living in that area. My other concern is the traffic, of course, on, on Tuwanda. I feel that developer needs to come in at least a part, that he's, he's annexing and now all the, all that area along Tuwanda needs to be upgraded, widened. And the developer should be paying for that with turn lane into his project. That would be a, that would be a good idea to do that. And I don't know if you do curb and gutter or how you, how you handle the rest of that. There's no room on Tuwanda right now to even walk down the street. It's not light enough. And I feel that this developer doing this, if he does the whole project, should be doing Boyer and Tuwanda completely. Part of it to kick in because I feel that the citizens do not need to pay, the citizens of the whole city don't need to pay for upgrades of that, of that road at all. They're bringing in a lot of homes that are planning on, you know, if you look at their future plans down the road, I want to go down there a little further. I'm just trying to kind of nip this in the bud and try to avoid any, any future problems. I have a question on the developer. I don't know if he's here. What is your, what is your build-out plan?
As far as like-
Okay, what is your, what is your plan for, what's your build-out in the first section? What, how, eighty-five percent? Are you going to want them to come forward to move on? Or you plan on building this out a hundred percent and re-annexing property in?
So I believe the first phase that we show in the northeast corner-
Right.
Would be, would be the first thing that happens. And then there's going to be, obviously, some sort of structure that then crosses that channel.
Right.
So that would certainly be in the next phase. But any-
So, yeah, once we get near completion, then we'll move forward to the next phase.
So near completion or selling of the product, of the homes?
Correct. Near completion when we're about out of the first phase, which first phase is that triangular piece up in the forest?
Correct, yes.
Three nine lots. So once the phase is near completion, then we'll start moving forward for Phase Two, which would be the south portion of that engagement.
Okay, so are you going to get to that? And then if you move on further, what is your, what is your thought, your projection? How many property, how many properties get sold?
Oh, yeah, I actually would know.
You're going to make the, how do you sell and move forward?
Exactly.
You have any kind of projections on that?
Sir, would you mind addressing?
Well, I'm talking to him, too. It's kind of hard to talk to him when you're talking.
Well, right now, yes-
Well, I think just, if, what, what we can do is, you've got questions on the developer about how he'll break up his phasing, and then Vice Chair can call them back up at the end of the public hearing to answer any of those.
Okay, got it. Just trying to understand how that, how this is going on here. That's my major concern is, is basically the traffic. And when this does get built, if this does pass and you do build it, there is a weight limit on Tuwanda. And right now, you have a lot of independent truckers that like to freely use Tuwanda to get on it over, that are overweight. And my concern is, you know, I don't need cement trucks coming by. I don't need dump trucks coming by through there. They need to follow the truck routes. So that could be when they bring the final plat in. Thank you.
Anybody else wanting to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Darren Schwent, thirty-five fifteen West Tuwanda. I'm not trying to be mean here. I'm just trying to be realistic. When I first saw this, my first thought was Looney Tunes, Daffy Duck, his eyeballs rolling and the dollar signs come into his eyeballs. I realize we are just talking about the northeast corner here, but you got the whole, just that square there that's highlighted. I counted a total of ninety-eight homes or lots in that area, and I have no idea what the northeast corner is going to be of multiple homes. If you have ninety-eight homes, a car and a half per home, that brings a hundred and fifty vehicles trying to leave every morning. And then with the multiple dwellings, you could have, easily have another one hundred and fifty in just that rectangle trying to leave. And they're going to be, most of them are probably going to be going to Wichita because El Dorado cannot support that kind of people with businesses. We just, there's not that much. They're going to have to be going somewhere else. So we're going to have traffic coming in from out of town to the college. We're going to have people in town going the other way. We're going to have school buses trying to stop. The traffic on Tuwanda is going to make Central and Havre Hill look like a stop sign. It's going to be crazy. There are only two exits out of this area. Three hundred vehicles leaving every morning out of two exits with already the college traffic. That's why I say the dollar sign's going up in Daffy Duck's eyes because this looks like chaos to me. The other concern I have is our property values are going to be going down if we try and resell our house. The reason why we have a value of our house is because right now, when I look out my dining room window, I see cattle grazing. Man, I love that. That's where I want to be. And I won't get into how we got annexed by the city. That's another story. But I would like to keep my view. My property values are going to actually go down, but my taxes are going to increase because somebody's going to have to pay for Tuwanda. And it's going to have to be a four-lane road. It's not just going to be curb and gutter, make it a little nicer road. It will have to be a four-lane road to accommodate this traffic. So those are my concerns. You got traffic, including school buses. So if school buses come along our road and pick up the people in our fourteen houses there, that's going to stop traffic considerably. And then all the school buses picking up kids inside this new developed area. Just going to be crazy. So I guess one question I would have of the developer is what, and it sounds like they're still, still working on it, so they may, probably can't answer it, but, you know, what, what are we expecting here in this multiple housing area? That just, that sounds kind of nebulous is what we're doing, so. Anyways, that's kind of what I'm, oh, one other thing. Has a decision been made yet?
On?
On this, what we're talking about?
We've already kicked it to the commission once.
Well, the reason why I ask is, again, I'm going back to a history that last time when we were annexed into the city of El Dorado, they had a hearing. The city commission, not the planning commission. The city commission had already made a decision before we were even asked what our opinion was. And because of that, some of us are a little bit upset. By law, they had to have a hearing, but that didn't mean they had to listen. And that's, I just really-
Let me frame this for you, sir. This is a volunteer advisory board. And no matter what our vote is, we send it to the city commissioners. And they can, even if we all vote yes, they could still vote no. And sometimes, a lot, most of the time when we vote yes, they vote with us, but that's how this works. We're here to hear you and your concerns.
So, okay.
And I believe we did have this already, like, a couple of months ago, in February, and you guys weren't here for that.
We weren't at, the meeting got changed.
Yeah, it got changed to the following week.
And we weren't notified. That's why.
Is that why?
I'm sure she kicked it back to us.
Is that why they kicked it back?
So, Mr. Rickert, the first time, they were notified by mail, and the second time, because of a non-form, there was phone calls, I went.
So they don't, we had content?
Yes.
Okay.
To the thousand feet. Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to, because traffic volumes were, you know, you talked about three hundred. I just wanted, currently today, Tuwanda Avenue, that section from Boyer to Havre Hill carries an average daily traffic of twenty-five hundred and ninety vehicles per day. And Boyer Road, south of Central, carries twenty-one fifteen, two thousand one hundred fifteen is average daily traffic.
So what's the number of traffic that needs to happen before the roads can be expanded and the city considers expanding that quicker or, or more quicker? Because that's quite a bit, I think.
It's, it's, it's a bigger decision, it's, it's a financial decision. It's a safety decision. It's, it's, um, it's a lot. The, the traffic, looking back, I checked a few traffic counts. It's stayed pretty steady. But once the traffic master plan's complete for the entire city-
Right.
That corridor's going to be a point of focus. That is something we had, rather, four hundred respondents-
You think that was-
-that did the traffic survey, talked about, and some of them talked about that area. There was a specific question on the survey about, about Tuwanda and Boyer Road.
Think that one's probably going to be moved more to the top of the list of things to improve.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Kimberly Blake. I live at thirty-six twenty-five West Tuwanda. I live right on the corner of Tenth and Boyer, or Tuwanda and Boyer, however you want to say it. And I can attest to the traffic. There are times where it takes minutes to get out of my driveway between eight and nine in the morning, when the college classes are going. When they get out around two or three in the afternoon, it's not unusual for me to have to sit in my driveway three or four minutes just to pull out, to get out. There is, I've, I've complained about that intersection to the city because it's, it's a non-stop. I mean, the cars just keep going. They don't stop at the stop sign like they should. They just keep turning and keep turning and keep turning. But the conflict of, well, how- But the conflict of, well, half of it's county, half of it's city, township, you know, the weight limits, we have McCloskey that goes down Boyer all the time using air brakes, I mean, I've complained about the traffic out there before and nothing, no extra controls.
Who do you complain to?
Just to the city, I just call in to the city.
Is it, do you live in the county or the city?
I live in the city.
Okay.
But I'm right on the corner, we're half county, half city. And that's what I get, they'll say, well, that's up to the sheriff, or that's up, you know.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, it's, it's a, there's no defined authorization for that area right there, that intersection. No one wants to say, oh, we covered that whole intersection. So, the traffic is, is an issue out there and has been before this project ever took The second thing, with you guys being on the planning commission, and future phases of this project, I would like the lots to be compatible to what we have now. We all live on two to three acre lots. If you're gonna develop on the south side of the pond, it'd be nice to not have any, but if you're gonna put some there, to have them coordinate with the, the type of living that we're used to, and not these little bitty, little bitty lots, they're money maker lots, what I call them. So, when they get to that phase, I would want you guys to look at that and see if that would be more feasible, of an option for you to look at.
And Mr. Ripley, when, when and if they get to that next section, there would be another?
So there, there would be, if, if they decide to move there, there would be another public hearing, a rezone, there would be a plat, there, there is no officially public hearing that applies. When a plat's presented to you all, there is not public notification, there is not necessarily a public hearing opportunity. Plating, it either meets the regulations that are adopted, or it doesn't.
So they can't change.
So my question is, is when they get to that, when and if they get to that next part outside the yellow, this same group could come back and talk about their wishes at that point? Are you leasing some of this current ground on this map right now?
Mike, it's not, it's, my cousin is leasing, um, right behind, what's part of Dave Rush's?
Like the area behind the pond?
Um, right back there on Boyer Road.
You're leasing up your cattle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, just asking.
Yes, and so, I want to state my objection for losing.
Trying to cite a map up here. You're saying that you're leasing the land that they're proposing for the additional housing area that's just south of the pond?
I think you're telling you're south of this map, right? Is that what you're meaning?
I thought, I thought it was right behind Dave Rush's.
Dave Rush's property is, is not even really shown on this, it's.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So it's, but I just wanna voice my concerns, and because there is cattle out there now and losing egg.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to this public hearing?
Big name and address, please. My name is Mason Johnson, I live at thirty-five twenty-five West Tuwanda, and I just wanna voice my concerns too. I sound like a broken record, but, you know, when I saw this plan, I almost wanted to pass out, I think it's, I think it's just ridiculous in how much traffic we're gonna have in our areas now, since there's only two exits. I personally leave at five-thirty in the morning and have to wait for a car or two to drive by before I can get out of my driveway, so. Coming home is a whole different story, I mean, it's, it's just busy, packed full of traffic. And it's, and it's just real upsetting for me, like, I grew up here, my grandfather owned where I live now, so I grew up there, and just seeing this concept is upsetting that, you know, I won't see the deer around there no more, all the wildlife, the ducks, and I just, it just really hurts to see that, you know, it really upsets me, uh, kinda makes me not wanna live there anymore as well. Property taxes are gonna go up as our home values go down, so. Just real upsetting for me, and I hate to see it, hope you guys can consider our situation. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
My name's Jim Hatfield, thirty-two oh five West Tuwanda, the property right next to the flood plain, closest. My concerns are, of course, infrastructure. We don't have the infrastructure to do that, who's gonna pay for that? It's gonna be the people in the city of El Dorado later on paying for that, because your Scott here said the plan is long-term down the road. So what, what is the plan? We have a water line coming from the west to my property with a hydrant that is used to flush the line into the creek, which I believe is illegal, to put treated water into that creek unless you got a permit. They're gonna come down from the college, and there's just gonna be that one area that you're not annexing between my house and their property. That water line needs to be connected. The hydrant needs to be moved where it can help the other neighbors and not just be a flush line. You put riprap all across my driveway, you let the utility contractors come in and rudder up the area, that was my drive, and you just looked at the little map and said, oh, we're annexed here to this corner, it's a, a right-of-way, we'll just do what we want. We had invested in a sewer line, are you gonna connect this development into our sewer line that we bought and paid for?
Sewer, no.
Because it goes right into the lift station.
You guys, you guys have an eight-inch line that runs behind all the homes there.
Right.
That then goes north, um, north of Tuwanda and ties in the city's lift station there across the street. So that infrastructure would not be used for this development.
But in the future, because of the flood plain, those houses down on the, to the west, on the map that's not included in this zone, I get that, are they gonna run this into our sewer line?
No, it, they, they would all, I mean, the, the flood plain being the flood plain and being the lower area, that's, that's generally where we want, you put those gravity sewer mains, it's the lowest part of the site. All of that will come with future concepts when we're laying out, laying out the area. There, there have been discussions I've had with the developers' consultants on sewer, but sewer, the, the, the main that is in your rear yards that goes north, that will not be part of any connection with this project, there, there would be no benefit for them to even use that just because of the distance away from you, and, um, the water line definitely would need to be connected and tied on, and I, I don't necessarily recall, you know, I know the twelve-inch water line was extended, I'm assuming it was fire protection thing, and, and we do have to flush it because it's a dead end hydrant, there's not enough water usage on it today. So there's water that has to be wasted just to keep the line chlorinated, keep the drinking water quality, so, he is correct, that's, that's the reason that hydrants there constantly on time are flushing water out of the system to keep fresh water in it. But water will be constructed around the development, wherever the right-of-ways are platted to serve not only their domestic needs, but the fire protection needs of the developments.
Are they connected to the city water where they're at right now?
He is, and his neighbors at Tuwanda Avenue.
Okay, so, I guess my question would be, the new development would be city water, city sewer, all of that good stuff, is there a, a plan to maybe get everybody in that block connected to city water if they wanted to? Or are they on someone well?
They are on city water.
All, all of them are? Okay.
Yeah, there, there may be wells out there, but there is a city water lines and all of that, and I'm assuming they all have water meter services, I don't know that for a fact right here.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out a benefit for them on the development piece of it, what benefit they would see from it? From a city perspective?
That they would see?
The current residents, yeah.
Their level of services would change.
Okay, from a service standpoint, they're, okay.
And I'll mention the road, the road's been brought up a lot tonight, and, you know, city commission has policies on how roads are done, state law dictates how cities can spread costs on improvement, public infrastructure improvements. What's needed within the development would be part of the developer's responsibility, and that would be a petition with the city commission, with something like Tuwanda Avenue, you know, to see that improved, that, that can either be driven by owners in the area saying, hey, we wanna see this improved, and that would initiate a public hearing, much like tonight, but in front of the city commission. City commission has the authority to just proceed with a project and hold a public hearing. So there's various levels of routes, the city by state law can improve a road and spread it incessantly, now if the city decides, hey, we just wanna pay for it, you know, there's not that public process.
And the city could decide to just upgrade the road at any time.
As a policy, the, the city commission's policy if that road is to be improved today, there would be an improvement district, and there would be cost spread amongst the property values. And those costs spread would be a residential equivalent district.
Now, honestly, if the road is improved while this is in development, the cost of improving that road would futuristically be spread among the new residents of this development as well, so theoretically, it couldn't raise our taxes at all, if it's split up in there.
If the commission decides, hey, we wanna approve Tuwanda Avenue, or enough landowners come in front of the city commission saying we want to re-improve, there's an improvement district created, just like Mr., yeah, talked about on Third Avenue when his road was approved, so.
Is it all or nothing in the road? Yeah, gotta do the whole Tuwanda section, or can you do part of it? Is it an all or nothing?
I think, I think you would wanna do it all, I mean, I think it would make sense.
And there's already funding set aside, or some funding set aside for this already, maybe?
No, I'm, I'm just bringing that point up to let you know that, you know, there's policies in place that every body has adopted, there's state law, we have to follow.
So if they made it a three-lane, which would be helpful, that residents out there would only be on the hook for two of those lanes, two to three?
Right, and the city, the city has a whole.
No, we shouldn't be on the hook for any of this, this is their development, not ours.
They're not even gonna live here.
Yeah, they should pay for it.
They're just here to make a couple bucks.
Tom, we don't need any comments, if you wanna speak, you need to come up to the podium.
But that improvement district is there, and, and typically that's what the city, the city commission has done by practice and policy on roads. An example would be like Boyer and Sixth, or, I'm trying to think of another one, Oil Hill Road, Country Club Road, McCollum Road, Douglas Road, those sorts of roads that have been improved.
Over in my neighborhood.
That's been developed after, and have been developed on, so.
Can we use an example of the new housing district out there by where I live, there on the north side? That new housing district they built, they had to build that brand-new road, they had to build all of that stuff out there.
That's developer a hundred percent.
Okay. So this couldn't be something similar to that?
So, yeah, he's, he's ready to start with Phase One. He brings petition to the city.
Are you saying Scott?
We're, we're doing the internal roads. We're doing the internal roads. We're doing the internal infrastructure. I'm talking if Tuanda Avenue gets improved in the future.
Gotcha.
So the road outside of the development, but the road that the development feeds.
Okay. I got you. Okay.
Are you saying that we're on the hook for the specials to improve that road? The 12 or 13 houses?
Even with or without this development, if the city commission determine, hey, we want to improve Tuanda Avenue, that could be a decision they make.
You mean it's an arterial road, you could still have to pay the specials to?
Yeah, that's, the city commission does that with their policy. They have an improvement district that's created, pay for the residential equivalent of the road.
Is the north side?
So like when your neighbor brought up Sixth and Boyer, when that was built, it was built like thicker asphalt, wider roadway. It's not a residential street. So the thicker asphalt depth, the wider the road, the drainage, all those other things that are involved in it were paid for by the city at large. And then just what costs were associated with the residential street.
Is the north side of Tuanda, is that going to be annexed into the city?
So that's.
Because there's always been that problem of the township and the city, nobody wants to pay for it, right?
So that's, we do have a, the city commission does have a request from the landowner to the north to annex the entire, all the property north of Tuanda Avenue. So that is a case you all will be hearing here shortly, I imagine, for rezoning on that. They are looking to do residential as well.
That reminds me, I have another beef, the thousand-feet distance of sending out notifications. This is going to affect the whole city of El Dorado in the future. Not just this little area of our county. It's going to affect everybody. You got the school clear, put the schools out clear on the north end of town. Then you're going to put in 100 houses over here on the south side. There's going to be all kinds of infrastructure problems. It's going to be paid.
This is the circle school district, I believe, where these homes are going to be put.
Okay. Sure.
So, yeah, the, I just wanted to mention the infrastructure side of things in the road. Tuanda Road thinks separate from development. If Tuanda Road is improved, it's driven because of property owners requesting it.
Right.
Governing body making a determination that we're ready to improve it because of safety, volume, X, those sorts of things. The roads deserve the development interior. The sewer lines, the water lines, the stormwater drainage is all based on policy in your all's book, in the book, who pays for what. So it's either the developers paying for it or the city at large is paying for it.
So basically, if nothing happens with this development and they don't do anything, it could be 20, 30 years or never for Tuanda to ever be done?
Well, how many years ago? It's been, we did have a petition for property owners to improve Tuanda Avenue.
Okay.
Six, eight years ago.
No, it takes us 51%, right? Get that down.
51% of the resident owners, 51% of the land, there's various.
There's a formula that goes with it.
But if this, if this doesn't happen and Tuanda does get fixed, you know, you guys might actually end up paying more for it.
The asphalt's actually fallen into our ditches and.
That's what I'm saying. If they go out and fix Tuanda now without the residential property going in, you guys would end up paying more, honestly.
Right now, most of the road part, I know it's part of the decision, but it's not what we're supposed to be deciding here tonight.
That's true. Okay.
So I'd like the developer to kind of tell us what the price point of the houses that they're going to build in there. And is this government-assisted housing? Are we low-income? I'd like to know that, if you would ask him, please. Thank you.
State chairman address here?
Eddie Dean, 1010 East North Crest Road, El Dorado, Kansas. So to answer your question, no, it is not Section 8 housing. No, it is not low-income housing. Essentially, our goal is to build another vintage place. And to touch on that, there's 150 homes in Vintage Place. There's two exits in Vintage Place. Traffic count, I have no idea what traffic count is on 12th Street. It's a two-lane road. No idea what the traffic count is out there. Our goal, price points, obviously, is to keep the houses, you know, as reasonable as possible. Not like some of the houses have been built in town, but starting in the low-twos and working our way up from there. Obviously, our goal at the end of the day is when we start moving into the additional phases that are over on the south side to increase the size of homes. And just like vintage is, when you get up on the hill, the houses get larger. So none of it's Section 8, none of it's low-income, no apartment complexes. All single-family and twin home is what our thoughts are right now.
So that red section is multifamily then and not apartments or something like that? It'd be more like duplexes, you're saying?
Townhomes, some homes.
Something like that? Okay. Okay.
Eddie, how many pages are you looking at here?
So just depending on how all of the funding is, grants, what we can get, what the expenses are to the consumer, obviously, at the end of the day. Obviously, specials are a huge deal when people are purchasing property and purchasing homes. And if we can get grants or the funding through the state to reduce that infrastructure expense, it's going to increase the size of our first base. Our build-out times are obviously supply and demand. So we can only build them as fast as people want them. And holding them cost down is obviously going to make them more desirable to the consumers. So I guess it's undetermined at this point.
So these are going to be spec homes where you're going to build them first and then find a buyer?
No, not, no, not all, not all.
Okay.
We're wanting to build customs. We're wanting to build spec homes, obviously. All the above, but.
So the average-sized home and the average-sized lot is variable?
Correct, correct. Obviously, we want to start out smaller on the entryway and the property that backs up to the college. You know, you don't want a $400,000 house that has to look out the back door at the college, so.
But somebody going behind this pond here, south of the pond, could be $400,000 homes.
They're going to increase in size, exactly, yeah. I mean, let's be real, we've got 100 lots over here in this first area. It took 10-plus, 15-years to build out 150 houses in Vintage Place. So, I mean, this is a great concept and where we want to get. And I don't know that El Dorado is ever going to be to the point where we're going to build out 150 houses a year like you see these towns do. I would love to see that, but realistically, it's not happening unless we have, you know, obviously, a lot of people moving to El Dorado. But I don't foresee that happening.
And by this map, I see two entrance ways on Tuanda and maybe two or three on Boyer Road, if you ever get that far.
Just direct, correct.
Eddie, are there any, on this first phase where these, this one arterial inner road that would technically come off of Tuanda Street, with this, is there any thought process to go ahead and build that road out all the way to Boyer just in anticipation of having for the traffic, for the new development and just be easier to?
Access?
Access and all that stuff?
So we actually had a couple of different conversations about that. The bridge is going to be an expense, obviously, or however we're going to access or cross over that drainage way. We even consider starting on Boyer Road and working our way back the other way. But all the utilities and the sewer and everything has to come from the north side. So that wasn't practical to do that either because all the infrastructure had to be brought, cleared out of Boyer Road on the backside. So in the same way, when you're dealing with streets, you can't run a, you can't run a road clear across the field for access until you get to that point because somebody's going to have to pay that expense to go clear across there for one road. So that's why we're starting small, staying on the north side of that drainage way, not having any crossings over there at this point. That little triangle piece of 49 lots or whatever it is is what we're going to plan on opening up in the initial stages and then supply and demand from that point forward, so.
So realistically, just in the proposed rezon area, this could be a 10, 15-year plan?
Well, I mean, I would like it not to be, but.
Unless there's a giant move or anything.
But no, it's not, this isn't Oklahoma City or Kansas City, not even Wichita, because Wichita don't even do that. But where you go in and you blow up and you build 40 houses at a time and you turn 175 lot phase out in 14 months, it's just not happening.
So Mr. Hatfield's concern, I think, and maybe a lot of homeowners are, these aren't going to be cheap rentals then?
Not at all. Nope. Not at all. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions from the commission?
Thank you. Vice chair, prior to closing the public hearing, I did have, wanted to bring up a few. You all have in front of you a letter from Sarah Jane Haggins. So that was delivered to us. You've all had the opportunity to look that over. Mr. David Rush, I met with him this morning. He wanted me to voice his concern. He owns a property, if you can see my cursor here, south and west. And for the reasons stated here tonight, things like what type of homes, is he going to be low-income, things that are not really, as Mr. Rush and I discussed, you know, talking about the zoning, the land use stop, that the city or the planning commission at all can dictate the prices of the homes or the colors or the sizes or that sort of thing. He did bring up those concerns. He did bring up a concern, you know, that next phase would be annexed and if there would be a buffer between him and them. We did hear from a Clint Rogers, who was against the project, and a Cliff Rogers, who was against the project as well. Both of those gentlemen reside on Tuanda Avenue.
And that's real houses?
Yep. And that's all I have for other comments.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak at this public hearing? Okay, I see none, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to a discussion by the planning commission. Is there anybody that'd like to say anything?
I think there's a lot of comparing the vintage place. For me, I think R3 is just a little bit too loose for the area. If you want to have those higher-end homes, I think it needs to be an R1 district. That's why I'm fed up now.
Is there anybody else?
I know there's a lot of concerns and certainly if I lived out there, I'd have those concerns as well. I think a legitimate concern is the Tuanda Road. And I hope that the city commissioners will come up the plan for it. And based upon what I see in the decision-making guidelines, I'll be voting for it.
I think development's moving this direction in the city. And I don't know if we're going to be able to stop it. I sympathize to some of you people I know, you've lived there a long time and you hate to see your home values change. But I'm not too sure that all values will go down. I think this might increase some of your values. We've even had some discussion here in the past, are being homes being built to the west of you on Tuanda. We've got some people come in and develop with five-acre lots and three-acre lots. And I think people are looking to move and build and move there. And I think that's where El Dorado's headed. There's nowhere else to go for development. I think Mr. Dean and some other developers in town have exhausted everywhere they can go. And relative to grow, I think we're going to have to go somewhere. And I do have a big concern about the Tuanda Avenue. I drove it today. I've driven it many times and it's not in very good condition. And I don't see it getting any better with all the traffic, but I don't know what else we can do.
Mr. Rick, I have a question for you.
Yes.
If, I know this is, you said we'll be coming up to annex to the north side of Tuanda. Would that make Tuanda all come under city per?
Yes, it would.
So that would take out all of the squabbling about who does this and who does that?
And if I recall, I can't give you the date, but annexation laws change where no longer do you go down the center of right-of-ways or section lines to, just specifically for these problems. Where we cleaned up some on Tuanda on east of Havre Hill Road, there's portions of that. It used to be in city, not in city, and we've annexed that entire right-of-way. So we're anticipating later this summer, you'll hear a case for rezoning that's an annexation. We'll have to clean all that up, even clean it up on Boyer Road as well, north of Tuanda Avenue.
Is there anybody else on the commission that'd like to say anything? Or have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to recommend the approval of case number 2437 REZ, an application by West Suthers and Dean Construction to rezone approximately 78.3 acres in the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 9 Township, 26 South Range, 5 East in Butler County, Kansas, from AR Agriculture Residential District to R3 Residential Multifamily Dwelling District. I second.
Okay, I have the motion and the second. And then get a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Commissioner Fellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Machetti?
No.
Chairman Hackler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Letts?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Five in one.
All right. Moving on to the next item. Item number two, case number 24-01-CLAT, consideration of Belly Acres West Platte?
Yes, so Belly Acres is just north and west of the development we were just talking about. For you tonight is consideration of Platte. This property will remain in Butler County. However, it is protocol for U.S. Planning Commission to review it as part of our ETJ. There will be five lots created. Around, four of the lots will be around three acres. One of them will be 17-acre lot.
This is that one just to the west of where we were talking about that we did a couple months ago, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I go back.
They finally got the Platte done for it.
Yeah, it's just right here by this, west of there.
Okay. All right.
This is the area, you can see in yellow that we rezoned the residential.
Okay. So these are just the Plattes for that? Four, five?
This one lies outside of the current city of boundaries, right?
Yep. And his intent until the city grows or there's some regulatory requirement like sewer, they need to tie the sewer. But they will remain in county.
So Lot 5 probably won't be anything but a buffer for the highway, right?
No, he's planning on building his house on that.
Is he? On Lot 5? Okay.
Is that what the little strip in the middle is that driveway access?
Yeah, that's his, that's his private access. There is no, there is no public right.
There is no, there is no public right of way.
Okay.
I take that back. There is public right of way dedicated as part of this, but it's additional right of way on Tw- on Tawanda Avenue, anticipating those future improvements. And there are internal easements in there as well, but the right of way is going to be granted to the county, the easements are for utilities to be used, but the city of El Dorado won't have our utilities in there.
Who's this belong to?
Mr. Wade Wilkinson.
And he's going to live, he's going to build a home there, as I said?
I believe he said he was going to build on lot five, right?
Yeah, the big one.
Big one in the back.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, okay, gotcha.
I believe his family was going to go in there?
I'm sorry.
Other ones, wasn't it? I think it was.
No, I think you're thinking of a different.
Okay, I think I have a different.
No, that's these right here.
I'm, I'm so confused.
This, these lots are just.
Actually, over here, yes.
Those were the other ones that the guy's going to combine and build his house.
I got you, okay.
Wait, I.
It doesn't look like anyone's here to speak on it, it won't be public, so it, it conforms the Butler County's review, review of this plat and accepted it as conforming, conforms to our, our regulations. Looking for planning commission regulation.
All right, so I am moved to approve the plat from Belly Acres West as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Got a motion? Do you need to do a roll call vote on that?
Yep, yep. Commissioner Fellers.
Yes.
Commissioner Pachetti.
Yes.
Chairman Ackler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Leeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Letts.
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
All right.
Any old business?
No old business.
Staff items?
Yes, our next meeting, um, we are going to have a rezon of thirty-eight acres at southeast twentieth and Blueston Road from A R to R S and the plat for that same location. They're creating some, some lots for development that don't meet the A R zoning requirement. And unfortunately, but thank you for your service, we are going to have to elect a chair, a vice chair at that meeting.
Is this your last meeting? Is this it?
Will it be next meeting or this meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next one's your last one?
So, appreciate all your time.
Your last one, too?
A great resource and a great member of planning commission, so thank you.
What is it about?
Thank you. You can't reconsider it.
Right?
It's whatever they say.
Yes, a couple weeks.
We, we do have a couple applicants, two, yeah, one that qualifies. One is just across the street from our ETJ, so unfortunately, but we do have one of our applicants, Mr. Norm Wilkes, that the city commission's going to consider, well, he may, if they appoint him, he may be a part of that series shortly. That's all I have.
Okay.
I'll motion to adjourn for the night?
Second.
Motion has been moved and agreed to. That would be the end of it.